Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Pittsburgh Law Enforcement Center for a candidate forum this evening focusing on the upcoming race for Pittsburgh City Commission. We first of all thank you for, uh, thank you to the city of Pittsburgh for hosting us today. My name is Blake Benson. I'll serve as the moderator for tonight's event. Joined tonight by Patrick Richardson, editor of the Morning Sun, who will serve as our proctor and will screen all of our questions here this evening. A little bit of housekeeping, uh, the way the format will go tonight, each one of our candidates will give a two-minute, uh, opening statement. Then we will go into, uh, one of two prepared questions that the candidates did receive in advance. Uh, the candidates will get ninety seconds to, uh, to respond to those questions, and then we'll open it up to questions from the audience. If, if there are audience members that would like to submit a question tonight, we have index cards and pens at the back of the room. Uh, the only criteria that we have for the questions is that they are fair and they are applicable to all seven candidates. If there is a question that is asked tonight that does not meet one of those criteria, uh, Mr. Richardson here will screen those, set those off to the side, and those questions will not be asked this evening. Uh, as I mentioned to the candidates before we began tonight, uh, just to kinda keep them, help them, uh, keep up with where they are time-wise, when they have thirty seconds left, I'll just hold up this yellow card until they see it, and I'll pull it back down, and then the red card means that you're past your time and it's time to go on to the, the next candidate. So, um, if there aren't any further questions, uh, we will begin tonight's, uh, City Commission Candidate Forum. All of the candidates drew, um, out of a, out of a cup a little bit earlier tonight just to see the order that we would go in, and so tonight, uh, Michael Gray has, has drawn the number one, so Mr. Gray will give our first opening statement this evening. Mr. Gray, two minutes.
Thank you, Blake. Uh, thank you for everyone who's here this evening and those that might be watching online. I appreciate the engagement from our community. It's nice to see a room this full, uh, for, for people to come out and hear about what the candidates might have to say, uh, those that are running for City Commission. Uh, I've been in Pittsburgh since nineteen ninety-nine, where I came here to go to college. Uh, before that, I grew up in Mexico, so my, my experience with Pittsburgh began in nineteen ninety-nine. Uh, I've been on the City Commission since two thousand and eleven. Uh, this would be, uh, me seeking a third term as City Commissioner. I work at Waco in the Legal Department, uh, where I work on a variety of matters, but, uh, primarily on contracts, and, uh, I'm proud of the work that we've done at the city over the last five years, uh, three to five years. I believe we've improved in a lot of areas, uh, particularly in terms of infrastructure and economic growth, uh, primarily organic growth with the businesses that we have here in our community. Uh, we've improved infrastructure, uh, we've improved our housing situation, uh, there certainly are a lot of challenges that, that still remain, uh, but I'm, I'm confident that we've done a good job with the resources that the citizens have trusted us with, and, uh, I'm hopeful that you guys will hear some more about the things that we have to say about where we see the city going in the next two to four years, and I very much appreciate everyone participating and being here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Okay, Mr. Feenan.
I'm Michael Feenan. I moved here seventeen years ago to, uh, get my communication degree at Pitt State. Um, I went on to do web development at Pitt State for, for other six years, um, before, uh, being hired by a company out of Boston. Um, I still do web development and enjoy it quite thoroughly. Um, we bought a house down the south end of town, and I've enjoyed that space quite thoroughly. I learned very recently, I'm very near Commissioner O'Brien, uh, just by a sheer fluke of chance. Um, I've gotten a, the question, I'd like to answer it for everybody here and watching, uh, why I wanted to run for City Commission, um, and it's a question I've got about a dozen different answers for, and all of them are good, but one, I think, really kind of drives home the idea, which is, um, a sense of family. Uh, my family, my grandfather was in the Army and was a firefighter. Uh, my father is a Marine, was a volunteer firefighter, EMT, paramedic. My mother was in the Army, uh, my uncles were Marines. When I turned sixteen, the first thing I did was join the volunteer fire department with my dad. When I turned eighteen, you've seen me walking around here, I'm not big, I'm pretty fragile, I wasn't cut out for the military, but tons of respect, either way. Uh, that idea of civic service is something that has followed me since I was a kid, and it's something that when I call place home, I look for ways to give back to it, and as I looked at ways that I could work within Pittsburgh and help it out, um, I had several friends who were kind enough to kinda give me that nudge to say that this was the opportunity that was right for me. Uh, not because I saw anything wrong, not because I looked at the commission and thought, "Man, I'm scared about the direction Pittsburgh is going," because I'm not. In fact, I'm thrilled by the, the people that are sitting up here with me, because I feel like at the end of this election, Pittsburgh wins either way, but I bring a set of skills to the table that I think is extremely valuable, whether it's communication, marketing, analytics, um, the way I work through problems, and that's something that I can serve with, not for two years or four years, but if I'm so lucky, ten years, thirty years, forty years down the road, I could still be doing this, if you'll have me, and that's my hope for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feenan. Mr. Ketterman.
Good evening. I'm John Ketterman. I was born and raised here in Pittsburgh, Kansas, and, uh, again, I decided to run for the Commission seven years ago. I've been on the Commission since then, uh, because I wanted to give back to the community. I'm also very proud of what we have accomplished in the last few years. Uh, we've seen a major improvement in, in several areas in Pittsburgh just by the sheer aspects of the, the housing that's been redeveloped, the houses that are in bad shape that have been torn down. Uh, we've also had a lot of new expansion in businesses, uh, in town, plus we brought in some new ones, and we continue to work on those, uh, to bring in more and to, uh, actually bring in people to live here. Those are part of the problems that we have right now that I would like to continue to work on. Uh, again, uh, it's been a good seven years. I would like to get, uh, four more if possible, uh, but that's up to you, so, uh, thank you very much. I thank all of you for coming and thank all of you for watching at home this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ketterman. Mr. O'Brien.
I'm Patrick O'Brien. I, uh, I want to thank you all also, uh, for showing up tonight and for all of you who are watching on TV. Uh, to be, uh, to fulfill your responsibility as a voter, it's necessary to know who you're voting for or who you're not voting for, and, uh, therefore, I think it's important that we have these kind of gatherings that let you all know about each of us. Uh, I was born in Kansas. My parents had a ranch about thirty-five miles from here. I went to school in Walnut, uh, first grade through twelve. Uh, from there, I went to Rockhurst in Kansas City. After a couple of years there, I came to Pittsburgh. I, uh, hold several degrees, uh, uh, my first one is in, uh, drinking beer at, uh, the 311. The second one, uh, is playing card at the 311, and then I got a master's for squandering my parents' money. But someplace along the line, I suppose that I grew up. When I decided that I had to have a job, I realized that I wanted to be in retail, so I went downtown to Little's and, uh, thought that if I worked there, I would be able to know the business from the front door to the back door, and that did happen. Uh, I've been in, in town for over fifty years. I've served in the, on the Chamber Board, I've served, uh, on numerous boards. Because I have been so fortunate to make a good living here, and I think it's important for all of us, uh, whatever we do, to give back to the community and see that, uh, things continue to excel.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. I guess I was aware of those degree options.
No comment.
No wonder so many people are going back to school.
And I think they're using those degrees.
Ms. McNay.
Good evening. I'm Dawn McNay. I'd like to thank, uh, Patrick and Blake for the opportunity to share a little bit about myself and the opening statement. Uh, my husband and I moved here in nineteen ninety-three. We had our first son and, and we decided, uh, living in Kansas City, we wanted a smaller community. My husband was very articulate and convincing me, uh, a woman who grew up in Omaha, that a city of twenty thousand would be a good place to go, um, and it's one of the many times I've told him he's right. Uh, as we look back, this has been a, a wonderful experience for our family. Uh, we have two sons. Um, my work-life is in healthcare. I worked eighteen years at Mount Carmel, now Via Christi. Uh, had a lot of, uh, great, different roles there. My favorite was representing the hospital in over twenty million dollars of construction, renovation, and expansion. Um, the last six years, I'm proud to say I've worked at Community Health Center of Southeast Kansas. Uh, my family and my employers have been very supportive in what my passion is, and that's education. I served for sixteen years on the Board of Education at USD two fifty, um, and continue to hang around, um, being involved in Leadership High and on the foundation of both USD two fifty and PSU. Um, we, my husband built a business here. He was a piano tuner and, and rebuilder. It's been a, a wonderful experience and echoing many of, um, the individuals here. Uh, I really enjoyed my time on USD two fifty, and I believe that Pittsburgh is really poised for great things, and the experience I bring, I think, will be beneficial in moving us forward.
Thank you, Ms. McNay. Mr. Anselmi.
Well, if you don't know me, my name is Jacob Anselmi. Uh, me and my wife live here in town and have settled down, graduated from Pittsburgh State, uh, in oh-nine with my undergrad and two thousand and twelve with my masters. Uh, if you don't know me at all, the easiest way I can sum myself up is I'm a video dude, okay? So the past six years, I've been the video guy at Pittsburgh State, so if you've seen something on TV, if you've been on the Facebooks or the Twitters or whatever it may be, if it's a video, there's a good chance I had something to do with it, as well as the team I'm privileged to work with. So, uh, my background is video broadcasting. I'm not gonna talk like a radio guy, uh, that would bore everybody. It'd be funny for me later on, but, um, one quick thing about me, and again, why do I wanna do this, and that's the, the ultimate question, um, that I've been posed with, and ultimately, it's a matter of how do I want to serve a community that I want to invest in? And so, I call this place home, me and my wife, we could've moved anywhere, and, but we wanted to make this home, and we have, so how can I reinvest in the community that's given me so much? And this is one way, there's multiple ways, you've heard thousands of stuff already, and I'd like to thank the millions of viewers online that are watching this right now, throw that out there. Uh, thank you both, Blake and Patrick, for, for being here, and everybody for showing up, um, but I just really wanted to give back. I thought this would be a great way of doing that. Um, I'm anxious to learn a lot more, uh, about the process and everything that's involved with our city, and one thing that I would say is, we have got an amazing city, right? We have the amazing people that make it what it is, so I'm anxious to more know, get to more know of you, uh, get to know more of you and see where we can go, and hopefully build a stronger future, because I think the best way for it is for it together, as our slogan says, right? So, I'm anxious, I'm excited, um, hopefully you get to know me. Any questions, please feel free later, I think, in the hour, however this works, and I'll be glad to answer anything, so thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Anselmi. And Ms. Chenoweth.
Hi, everyone, again. I've been thoroughly thanked for being here, and I'll repeat that. Uh, my name is Sarah Chenoweth, and I've lived in Pittsburgh for about twelve years. I moved here in two thousand and two from my hometown Baxter Springs, Kansas, right down the road. Um, I moved here to go to Pitt State, and I ended up with two master's degrees, one in English and one in Communication. Um, right now, I, I work as a, oops, feedback. I work as a staff member at Safe House Crisis Center. Um, I'm a substitute teacher at the high school, so I'm in the schools, and I also work as a yoga teacher several places around here. Um, and in addition to that, my husband Ben and I, back in February, just started our own, and as far as I know, Pittsburgh's only, uh, curbside recycling collection business, so we're even small business owned. Uh, another thing about me, I've been on the board of the local charity, Women Helping Women, uh, Fairy Godmothers Fund, for about three years now, serving as secretary and as a board member at large. Um, and you know, a lot of that work on the board of Women Helping Women, as well as my work at Safe House, I think, has given me a really unique insight into desperate needs of so many people in our community, and beyond that, the overwhelming generosity of, of so many more of you. There's at least one fairy godmother in the audience right now that has donated. So, I'm ready for City Commission, because like everybody else, I want the opportunity, um, to serve, you know, I, I didn't necessarily think that I would run for local office someday, um, but I have always known that whatever I ended up doing, um, I would only be happy if I was able to serve other people. So this place is my home, I wanna in, make that investment in my home to serve, and, uh, I'm excited to work with other city commissioners and staff just to make this a great place to live, uh, for all of the citizens of Pittsburgh.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chenoweth, and thank you all for your opening statements. Okay, we will now go into our first prepared question, which will be answered first tonight by Mr. Feenan, and the first prepared question, which again, the candidates did receive in advance, is this. What do you think are the top three priorities for the city to focus on for the next five years? Mr. Feenan.
Three things, ninety seconds, buckle up. So, to start with, one of the things that I've learned in talking to a whole heck of a lot of people over the last couple of months, is that there is a communications gap within the community, whether that's looking up things on the city website to how they feel about what's going on within the commission and within city departments, and it's not necessarily through any malice or anything like that, it's just a gap that has gone unregistered. Uh, my hope is the city is doing a lot of work towards that area, but we need to look into that a lot more, because there is a lot of misinformation, so to speak, in terms of how people feel about what's being done or how things are being done in town. That's something that needs to be looked at very closely. Number two is looking at economic development in town. As Mr. Benson is fond of pointing out, Crawford County is no longer the poorest county in the state anymore. Um, Pittsburgh in particular has been a windfall of that. We've raised our median income. Unemployment within the city has dropped to four point six percent, give or take, um, but we still have a lot of opportunity. Within Pittsburgh, or within the United States, office space rents at twenty-three dollars a square foot. In Pittsburgh, you can get it as low as nine dollars. So it's extremely important that we look at the organizations and the business industries that we can bring into town to use that advantage for their own. The last thing that I'd like to look at is that, not within the next five years, because it's much bigger than that, is we've got projects like the Mid-City Renaissance Project that will not be done in five years, but the work that's being done on the City Commission now and that the people will be doing who get elected, will be used towards setting up those initiatives to be successful.
Mr. Feenan. Same question, Mr. Ketterman.
Okay, I think, you know, to continue with what we've been doing over the last few years, we still have some, some, uh, housing issues that we need to resolve, which there are plans in the works, uh, in the near future that will take care of a lot of those issues. Our infrastructure, our streets, our water lines, our sewer lines are all things that are in dire need of being taken care of. Uh, I think, along with that, we need to continue to develop a skilled worce, workforce and get people here. Those are, there are businesses here that are having a hard time finding people to work for them, because there's just not enough people here right now. That's an issue that we have to continue to work on and, and try to recruit people to the area to fill those jobs, along with creating new jobs. And one that hasn't actually hit this area yet, but is coming this year, I think, or in the near future, is probably the opioid issues that are, that are plaguing the cities and, and, uh, states nationwide. Uh, it hasn't reached here yet, but in, in classes I've gone to, uh, it's pretty evident that it's coming, and I think that's something that we need to get ahead of on.
Thank you, Mr. Ketterman. Mr. O'Brien.
I think first, we need to remember, uh, what the main focus of a city is supposed to be about, and that is provide fire, uh, police protection, provide our waters, take care of our sewage, all of those kind of things. We need to focus, continue focusing on improving those things, continue our, uh, focusing on our infrastructure, our highways, our roadways, uh, which we are doing thanks to the, uh, voting public, uh, voting us, uh, extra, uh, point twenty-five percent, uh, to work towards that. But all of these, uh, are our main focus for the city, and we need to concentrate on them, concentrate on the infrastructure. We also need to concentrate on continuing the good partnerships that we have formed throughout the community, whether it's PSU, whether it's Crawford County, whether it's Gerard or Frontenac, Via Christi. Uh, we succeed when all of these entities succeed, and we have to maintain and nurture those, uh, relationships in order to move all of us forward.
Mr. O'Brien. Same question, Ms. McNay.
Thank you. I think the overarching priority is economic stability. Uh, we need to continue to work, as we have, in economic growth that will can, that will allow the stability. As Patrick said, the relationship we, the relationship the city has with the Chamber and PSU has expanded our capacity to, to work on economic development, but we need a framework for business growth, and I think we have a great start with Vision 2030, but we need to put some meat on those bones and really get a comprehensive plan. Um, secondly, we talk about innovation a lot, but innovation needs to expand to the city operations in order to maximize our resources. Um, we need to plan for a time when the safety tax expires. We need to plan for some external forces that may consume our resources. I think the city is on the right track, building up the reserves that were dented over the last seven years, and there's conversations about being self-sufficient in some of the utilities. Those are all, um, great things, and they, they lay the, the groundwork for us to be, um, stable. Um, and then third, the workforce. As, uh, Mr. Ketterman said, we have the relationships in place to provide workforce development, birth to work, um, and economic stability will allow predictability for our citizens. They should be able to predict, we should be able to provide predictability on what the resources we need for them to provide for us.
Mr. Anselmi.
So, the three things, right off the bat, I think childcare is huge, and so the Family Resource Center, I think they serve around three hundred right now, and there's a waiting list of, I think, around two hundred, so I think childcare is huge. What do you do with a child? We don't have a child yet, but down the road, we're talking about that, right? Uh, so that's gonna be on our mind, but childcare's a huge deal, and so I know a lot of parents who either can't work a full-time job, or the husband stays home, or vice versa, right? So, we need to try and help in that regard, and I think, you know, I, if, if elected, I'd be one member of a five-member board. That's five people out of twenty thousand, so really, I think it's up to the voter to decide what's gonna be important in the next five years. The other two things I would say, infrastructure's an obvious one. I think energy costs, and, and I get West Star, I think, just like many of you do, and I think it's too high, and so I don't wanna pay that much. What if we tried to do our own power? Something along those lines. I think power is a big thing. We have great water. Um, I don't know if anybody's from out of town that's gonna challenge the taste of the water. I drink the water, I think it's great. Um, but I think the third thing would be partnerships, economic development, relationships. I think that's what it boils down to. Um, we need to expand in that area, and I love the, the partnership between Pittsburgh State and the city, um, trying to foster those small businesses, large businesses, any business, come here, thrive here, and we want you to succeed, and as, as Patrick said, when you succeed, the whole town succeeds. So, it comes down to relationship building, and I think that's gonna be big moving forward.
Thank you. Ms. Chenoweth.
Okay, so, I, uh, I'm gonna echo economic development, as everybody else, it's what you get for being last, right? I get to say everything again, but, um, for me, it's really important that any economic development, that a big chunk of that goes to bridging the income inequality gap and providing upward mobility for Pittsburgh's working class and poor. Um, you know, I, I love that Pittsburgh is so supportive of small businesses, and I would do, you know, just about anything, thinking about tax initiatives or incentive structures that help keep our local businesses thriving and that put money back into the hands of business owners and their, uh, in Pittsburgh. Um, I will also echo infrastructure, particularly modernizing our infrastructure to meet the demands of the future. Um, I'll put in with that kind of housing, you know, that's its own very large issue, um, but setting high attainable standards for improving our many housing options, you know, two-thirds of people that work in Pittsburgh don't even live here because, um, of lack of housing options. Uh, and finally, this is gonna be a very large category, but I would just say, uh, sustainability. I would like to see sustainability considered across any decision we make, from economic development, um, to agriculture, to modernizing the way that we supply our energy, um, here in town. So, I think that there's really so much room for upward mobility going on in the city, so many exciting things happening, that it would be just, it's really great time to be involved in, in the local politics.
Thank you, Ms. Chenoweth. And finally, this evening, for our first prepared question, Mr. Gray.
Yes, I have, I have three things, some, a couple of which have been echoed by others, and then one that hasn't been mentioned. Uh, in terms of economic growth, when you look at the numbers and what we've been able to, and I say "we" very broadly, 'cause I don't think it's the city per se, I think it's the business owners and the people that put their, their capital and risk, and money at risk, but the community as a whole has been able to, uh, attain some pretty remarkable things in terms of growth, and it's been focused on people that are already here and this kind of sense of organic growth, and I think a lot of communities chase the pie in the sky type, you know, savior company that's gonna come in and, and employ thousands of people, and, and the reality is, we need to focus on those things, and we need to try to obtain those, but we also need to not forget the people that are here today that are employing hundreds, thousands of people, and I think we've been able to do that very well over the next, over the last five years. I think that's, needs to continue over the next five. Uh, in terms of infrastructure, I think we've made a lot of significant improvements, um, especially in the area of IT and others that a lot of people don't, don't realize, uh, fiber, uh, improvements in fiber, hardware, software, websites, things that we've improved, uh, at the city, and of course, not, you know, smart people have made that happen, not people like me, but people that, that make the thing, the great things happen. And then the last item that I'd put on the list, and, and it's not a very sexy item, if you will, but, I mean, we have a, a challenge in our community relative to mental health and homelessness, and I don't necessarily think that it's something that the city, uh, should be paying for, but I certainly think that we have to be involved in that discussion and work with the community to find a solution for those issues.
Good. All right, I will remind our audience members that we have cards and pens at the back of the room. If you would like to submit a question, please feel free to do so, uh, submit that to Mr. Richardson, and if it passes the, the test, then we will ask it of the candidates here in just a moment. The second prepared question will be answered first by Mr. Ketterman this evening, and it is this. A crucial part of serving as a Pittsburgh City Commissioner is the ability to work with opposing viewpoints to gain consensus on an issue or opportunity. Citing specific examples, please tell us how you've worked with differing opinions and how that experience has prepared you to serve as a Pittsburgh City Commissioner. Mr. Ketterman.
I think, at least for the three of us that have been in the commission, on at least a bi-weekly, uh, issue, we, we have to come together with some kind of consensus in every meeting, uh, or we wouldn't get anything done, we'd be like Washington, DC. Uh, but I think probably the biggest one that I could, the, bring a specific issue to would be each spring when we'd start the budget days. We have a, a working day each spring where we come together to listen to all the department heads and what they want in their budget, what the city manager wants in the budget, and then we have to decide what we're gonna let them have. Uh, I think, for an example, this year, uh, when we came in, there were some of us that wanted to see property taxes lowered. There were some of us that wanted to see the sales tax just go back for a quarter cent instead of half a cent, and then there were some of us that wanted both of them. They wanted to keep both taxes, but in the end, we were able to come together. Uh, nobody got everything they wanted, but we got a good plan for the city where we were able to at least lower the sales tax by a quarter of a cent, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ketterman. Same question, Mr. O'Brien.
Being in retail for almost fifty years, uh, you learn how to deal with people to, uh, get them to the place that they have what they want, uh, and I think that's helped me considerably, uh, whether I was, uh, working with the Chamber or working here, uh, as a City Commissioner. I, uh, have to echo what John said, every time we get into a budget meeting, we, uh, all come to the table with different ideas, different hopes, different, uh, perspectives, and we are able to work through them on a civil basis. We have no ranker, we, uh, don't, uh, argue, we may try to, uh, to, uh, suggest that, that the thing should go a different way, but we are able to work together every time we have an issue, and I think that is important. Like John said, nobody gets a hundred percent of what they want, but, uh, we come to a worthwhile, uh, effective decision.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Same question, Ms. McNay.
I think, uh, consensus building begins with everyone, um, involved having the same data, the same information, so you're starting from the same place, uh, and then really being open to hearing what people are saying. Um, I had the opportunity to represent the Board of Education on teacher negotiations for a number of years, and at USD two fifty, we do something that's called interest-based bargaining, where we just put everything out on the table, whether or not it's a-
everything out on the table, whether or not it's a negotiated item. And through that process, we build relationships. We may all know each other when we walk in the room, but under that structure, we build different relationships. So, when we got to the point of the items that sometimes cause conflict and heartburn, the relationship was there, the data was there, and we were able to work through things. Conversely, had another opportunity to be involved in negotiations where that foundation was not created, and the outcome was difficult. People behaved in ways I was quite surprised. So, for me, that was another life lesson. You have to take time to know who you are negotiating with or consensing with, and you all have to have the data available to make the best decisions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Enselme.
So, in my line of work, it's video, but I'm, I'm considered a creative. And so, I have some really out-there thoughts when it comes to video, and we make some humorous videos and some serious videos. So, in my line of work, what I do is, we, I have a lot of chiefs that I have to answer to and work with, and everybody has the best idea possible. Keep that in mind. So, the best way that I have learned is, you really have to try and relate to where they're coming from, and so, try and put yourself in their shoes. And the best example I can give is, you know, humor is interpretive, right? So, we're probably not all going to laugh at the same stuff, especially me, I'll laugh at some really weird things, probably. But you, you have to be willing to understand and know that the people are coming with their ideas and suggestions out of respect. And so, I think if you carry that same level of respect to everybody else, that's what it's all about. And so, there's going to be tough issues, I'm sure. The commission has already dealt with a lot of tough stuff, but as long as you keep that level of respect and you don't let it go there, I think that's a very, very positive thing. The thing I'll end with is, and you beat this all night, it's about relationships. And so, if I was elected, I'd be one of five. And so, you have to build relationships with your other city commission, and beyond that, with the city of Pittsburgh and the folks, all of you and everybody watching online, because ultimately, you want the consensus to have the greatest impact for the highest number of people in the town, so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Genowitz.
So, I will, you know, just say that I think in every aspect of our lives, when we're dealing with people, you have to approach other people with kindness and understanding and if necessary, forgiveness. You know, I've been fortunate enough to teach at Pitt State and teaching in the high school, where I've been able to be a moderator and encourage discussion between students of very different backgrounds, and that's always really fun to, to see other people kind of get that method of kindness and understanding. I mentioned that I am on the board of Women Helping Women, a local charity, and we are all such a great group of, of women, very strong, very passionate, we all care very much about what we're doing. But as I can imagine, a city commission would be, when people are very passionate about what they're doing and all care very much, you know, that people are going to butt heads and have differing opinions. And so, for, like with Women Helping Women, for me, at the end of the day, it's about the mission, and every single one of us is there to, to help other people and to be the best that we can be in the community. And I think that I would approach the commission in a very same way. Like Jacob said, finding respect, trying to find empathy with other people, understanding what other people are going through, and just seeing things through other people's eyes and being kind, always, at the end of the day, kindness always matters the most, I think.
Thank you, Ms. Genowitz. Mr. Gray.
I came up with a few examples. First and foremost, I'm a dad, so if anybody's a parent in the room, that's a daily, a daily job to build consensus and get your kids to buy into some of the decisions you make without necessarily pounding them on head. So, of course, you, some of you probably relate to that. In terms of the workplace, I actually have the benefit of being an in-house lawyer, and for many, lawyer is a bad word, so I do apologize if I've offended anybody by saying that. But I, I don't go out and create conflict. My job at Waco is to build consensus on contracts. The way we get business is by seeking out customers, satisfying those customers with our services, and creating contracts that create long-term relationships. So, my job on a daily basis is to make that contract work in such a way where we're building a long-term relationship, where we're creating a customer for a long-term relationship. So, that's kind of a workplace example. And if anybody doubts what local politics in Pittsburgh is like, I mean, I don't know if you guys saw the presidential debates, but I haven't heard one interruption tonight. So, I mean, that is a perfect example, I think, of the city commission. I know five of these people have never served on the city commission, but everyone is wanting to. All, all seven of us want to serve, and I think this is a great example of what we've been able to do in Pittsburgh. We might not all agree on the issues, we might not all vote the same way, but I'm okay going out to dinner with someone, I'm okay speaking with someone and shaking a hand, and I think this is a great example of that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gray. And Mr. Fienen.
And so, I love this question, because it allows me to go back about 17 years or so in my life. I want to look at this from a slightly different angle from some of the other folks, which is, I was a debater in high school. Let me rephrase it, I was a good debater in high school. And to be a good debater requires you to have a skill set where you look at problems from all sides, period. You have to be able to take your own biases out of it, you have to be able to step away from a problem and look at it from both sides. You don't just research, you don't just go get numbers and repeat them. You have to be able to understand and comprehend that information and then articulate it to other people. And then, more importantly, you have to get that person across from you to agree with you and understand what you're trying to get across. That, to me, is a skill set that I developed as a kid, and I've held near and dear to my heart every day since then. Because whether it's been in work, in life, anywhere else, my role has been sort of that glue person, because I can sit down and I listen to whoever is around me, I take in that information, and I figure out where the solutions are and where the problem solvers are. And I can do that absent my own beliefs. Now, if you elect a commissioner, you're electing them in part to make decisions, sometimes based on their judgment, and that's great. But absent judgment, I like trying to find how I can bind those decisions together. And that's where I think one of my strengths in understanding opinions and understanding where other people come from is extremely important.
Okay, thank you all. We will now move into our first question submitted from the audience. We have lots of good questions, and we'll get to as many of them as time will allow this evening. Our first, the first one to answer, the first question from the audience is Mr. O'Brien, and the question is this. What would you say to active young persons or young families to convince them to move to Pittsburgh? What would you say to active young persons or young families to convince them to move to Pittsburgh? Mr. O'Brien.
I would say that Pittsburgh has a lot to offer a young family. We have good schools, we have good medical facilities, we have a city government that is concerned about you, who's trying to do the best job they can for you. It's a city government that is based on customer service, that's what, that's how we feel we are dealing with our clients. We also, I mean, we, we have a, we're located between several cities that give you access to things that Pittsburgh, Kansas does not have at this point, but we are growing in that direction. We're expanding our retail. It may not be what it used to be, and it may never be what it used to be, but it's a good community to live in that offers you opportunities for growth, for nurturing your children, for raising your children in a healthy environment. And I, I think you would make a wise decision to move to Pittsburgh, Kansas.
Mr. O'Brien. Same question, Ms. McNay.
Pittsburgh is, has a lot of the things that young families look for. Childcare may be one, that's a gap, but we have choices in schools, which is important. We have a robust Parks and Rec Department. We have lots of opportunities for families of any income to be able to participate in family strengthening activities. We have a good employer base, and we have the opportunity for people to move up within the businesses. There's upward mobility. And the housing stock, we've talked about that, there is some gaps in the housing stock, some affordability, but the city is working on that. And I think the key thing is that the areas that make a strong city, schools, government, business, healthcare, those are all very strong in Pittsburgh, and those organizations work together. Everyone's at the table to make Pittsburgh a stronger, more vibrant city, and also a city that addresses the needs of all citizens, those with resources and those without. And I think that would be the case that I would present to a young family.
Thank you, Ms. McNay. Mr. Enselme.
This is a great question. Great question, a lot of energy is in Pittsburgh, right? There is a feeling of energy and a vibe in Pittsburgh that I feel, since I got here in '06, has a bit around, and a lot of it is kudos to the commission and the city and everybody, what they're doing to build our, our city, just our image, our vibe, our feeling. And so, for a young family, we're a young family, and we decided to say, you know, we don't have children, we have two dogs, so I do count that at some portion, but there's so much to do here. And, and all you have to do is, is get online and look it up and go do it. We have a vibrant musical scene, local artists who are fantastic, amazing. We have a $33 million Performing Arts Center that brings in touring Broadway shows and musical performances. Bill Clinton, Laura Bush, Mitt Romney, I mean, there is so much you can do here as a family, a great Parks and Recreation Program. There's biking trails, if you're into that. We have great restaurants, just ate at Chatters, shout out to them. But here's the thing, there is so much for a young family to do, and I think education is huge, there's a great choice that you have. Pittsburgh State University is the best institution in our region, I have to say that, and I believe it. And so, you have so many different options if, if you're a young couple looking for somewhere to settle down. But our biggest, our biggest asset, I think, is the people, it's all of you. You make the town what it is, it's not a building, it's not what happens within the building, it's, it's all of you. And so, I think the people here is, is one of our greatest assets, our businesses are great, shout out to Root, but I would encourage you to move here. Move here now, move here now.
Thank you, Mr. Enselme. Ms. Genowitz.
So, I also would consider my husband and myself an active, relatively young family. And we've also decided to stay here, you know, when, when we could have gone other places. And, you know, I, I'll echo the Parks and Rec, we have so many outlets for active families, wilderness parks, trails, improving our public green spaces, and that sustainability that I mentioned earlier. The education opportunities are great. I went to Pitt State for, I don't, what was it, like 10 years and got three degrees, and I love it, and it's such a great place to build community, and we need to work on keeping Pitt State graduates in the community, keeping it young and thriving and moving toward being a very progressive, modern, thriving Midwest city with a great art scene. You know, we have an art gallery now, we have art walks, festivals with music, you know, all that kind of things that people from Kansas City, you know, would come down here to do, instead of going the other way around and having to travel to other places. People can now travel to Pittsburgh and have big events, and the people here, I think, can be really proud of the direction that, that Pittsburgh is moving. And, yeah, and just being a thriving Midwest city with great green spaces, and Jacob said, really great people who are willing to really participate and, and make these things happen.
Thank you. Mr. Gray.
Candidates have already spoken, have already mentioned a lot of the things that are important to young people, parks, walking trails, arts, music, great schools, great university, things like that. I think, I think specifically, I would point to two or three examples that are significant examples of what we're doing in our community that are, that show the progressiveness of our town. One is Block 22. For any young person who is wanting to leave a big city, who is wanting to find a small town to locate, I would, I would find it hard to believe that there's any small town anywhere in, in our state, in our region, anywhere close by, that is doing something as significant as Block 22, which will have a significant impact on downtown and the community as a whole. So, that would be one example that I would point out. And I guess the other pieces that I would like to, you know, when I moved here in 1999, we had a very head-down attitude. Everything was very down, we're just poor old Pittsburgh, you know, we've, we've always done it that way, it's just the way it's always going to be. And I think if you go back and compare where we were and where we are now, and if you're a young family, if you find some people to talk to in Pittsburgh, people that have been here through both of those times, I think you will find that their, their reputation, their experiences, their examples, and their stories will be sufficient enough of, of a reason for you to come back, there's, there's that much of a difference.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Fienen.
So, I can tell you all about how important culture is in a town. I was a theater major in college, so that's very near and dear to my heart, whether it's music, performing arts, any of, you know, comedians that come to the area now, these are all great things. They also mean nothing if there's nothing for people to come here for. And, and I don't say that in a derogatory way, because we've had $300 million invested both in the community and around. That's incredibly important to what is available to this area. But what's important and what matters when you're trying to get people to move to this area and make them feel confident about it, is that all of our economic indicators for this area are ticking in the right direction. We've got about $400,000 in increase in retail sales over the last year and a half, it's roughly 6.5%. That allows us to put a lot more money back into the community, whether it's the schools, whether it's the roads, all of these things everybody's concerned about. That's incredibly important that we can provide that service. We've got, over the last year and a half, we've had less than 1,000 people unemployed. That means if you come here, there are jobs for you to come here for, and that those jobs are better paying. The average house price is down about 6%. The median house price is down to $75,000. Housing is something we do need to address, especially for younger people, and making sure there is good affordable housing. But the housing we do have is also tracking in the right direction for those people. Those are all really important to these people who are frugal. Frugality means looking at what the cost of living is in Pittsburgh. It's 88% the national average. That means your money here goes much farther than other places.
Thank you, Mr. Fienen. And Mr. Ketterman.
Well, I'll start off by echoing what Sarah said a little while ago. It's hard to go last on this, because everybody's already said everything there is to, to say on this, but, but they're all good points. We do have some excellent school systems here. Our Parks and Rec are by far a great access, or asset to us. I mean, with all the parks in town and the programs that they have out here for kids to perform in, the entertainment that is here now with the Bicknell Center, Memorial Auditorium, the art walks, there's all kinds of things for people to do here. The people of this community are what make this town great. And so, to just go around and talk to people, you'll find out what you need to know about moving here. You know, I think when you stop and look at Pittsburgh, it has a really bright future, and it would be a good place to raise any family. It's a small community with a big-town atmosphere.
Thank you, Mr. Ketterman. Okay, our second question from the audience will be answered first by Ms. McNay. Lots of good questions again tonight. Question is this. What are your feelings about city planning beyond your term in office? For example, making a 10-year comprehensive plan? What are your feelings about city planning beyond your term in office? For example, a 10-year comprehensive plan? 90 seconds.
I think in planning in any organization, you need to plan beyond five years, 10 years, but you, what's important is that your plan doesn't depend on the people that are there at the table at the time. We have great leadership in the city, in the schools, PSU, but any one of those individuals leave, the plan should not dissolve. So, when you're looking at comprehensive plan, you do need to look beyond the term of any individual. And that's what will, that's what will create the momentum and the sustainability. So, when we're looking at growth, we need to be looking at, at growth that is sustainable, that we don't have five years of great growth and lots of innovation, and then after that, it falls off because the people have left. So, I believe that when you're, a prudent plan would look at long-term, and it would look at systems that don't depend on the people that are sitting there.
Mr. Enselme.
Yeah, it's incredibly important to have a long-term plan. I think 2030, boom, that's a long-term plan, and it started well beyond this year, I know that for sure. So, definitely, definitely important. I would also echo and raise a concern of, in that long-term plan, are you planning also for what the state's going to do on, on a bigger level, right? Because that affects everybody, that affects the city, it affects everybody. So, I think if you were to go back to 2012 and look out 10 years down the road, did we foreshadow what was going to happen in terms of revenues for the state? I don't know, maybe somebody did, maybe that guy was locked in a closet somewhere. did. Maybe that guy was locked in a closet somewhere. But the thing being, I think, you got to be careful if you want to plan years down the road because, yeah, it's great to say, we need to do this and we're going to have these resources and they're going to be set in this one account and it's going to be there and then we can invest in that. We can build this. We can bring those people here. But if that account goes away because of a decision at a higher level, that affects everybody here. It doesn't necessarily affect them. It may help their bottom dollar. But I think you got to be careful on that. But the 2030 plan, I think it's perfect. It's exactly what this is, a long-term vision. And it's really important to have those visions and to have somebody, five people, 20,000 people, come up with that plan together because in the end, it benefits all of you, it benefits us, and hopefully the generation after. So it's very important to have a plan. I would just echo and hopefully raise the concern of, that plan could be foiled if people above us have a different idea of where to go and how that, how we're going to get funded. So I'd just be careful with a 10-year plan.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anselmi. Ms. Chenoweth.
So yeah, I would, you know, Michael said a minute ago that we are definitely in the upward trend as far as economic growth. And I think that any plan would be to plan for growth, but as Jacob said, to be kind of cautious, right? To build up those reserve accounts that we have in case something like 2008 happens again out of the blue. You know, did anybody quite expect that to happen and were we prepared for that? So planning for growth, but perhaps in a conservative sort of way. More and more people are going to college. I think it's pretty safe to plan that we'll need more student housing. And if we are talking in other areas of economic development about bringing in more business, housing for that, space for growth, just modernizing again everything, you know, the roads are going to have to be improved. And we know that every several years, we can save up for modernizing and improving our road structures, our utility structures. You know, I think to a degree, and I think that the people at the city right now, the city employees, the planners and the accountants are really great at their jobs and that they know what's coming, right? We can project into the future. And in using that data, again, to sort of conservatively plan for that growth and also have reserves, we're going to need more housing. We're going to need more streets and parks and room for the city to grow. So just that, again, modernizing the infrastructure that we have.
Thank you, Ms. Chenoweth. Mr. Gray.
Well, one of those types of plans would have been really nice when I first got on the city commission because we didn't have that. I will say, the city has done a great job with leadership of Darren Hall and Jay Byers and others. They've done a really good job of getting us in the right direction when it comes to long-term planning. Like I said, when we first became a city commissioner, we didn't really think beyond the city, didn't really think beyond each budget year. We kind of budgeted for that year and there was, except for a few items, there was very little long-term planning. And since then, we've put in place capital improvement planning for five years, five-year financial planning. We've also discussed and are starting to look at a master plan for the city that could be developed and discussed in conjunction with the master plan that Pittsburgh State University has. So that we're combining and partnering there to make sure that as a community, we're heading down the same path. We're not heading down different paths. And as Jacob said, Imagine 2030 really kind of helped us start down that right path when that was put together several years back. Because really, before that, there'd been very little effort to really, as a community, say, what are we wanting to focus on over the next 20 years? That really got us down the right path. But at the city, we have to do things more specifically than Imagine 2030. Imagine 2030 is kind of up here. We have to sometimes get down in the weeds and be more specific, you know, with respect to specific plans. And I think we've been doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Feenan.
So I kind of answered this in the first question with regard to this idea that the work the city commission is doing now and whoever gets elected is not about what is happening within the next, you know, two-year term, four-year term, five years. It is about looking towards how we set up the future of Pittsburgh, looking 15, 20 years down the road. You know, we look at things like Imagine Pittsburgh 2030, it pegs population growth moving up towards 50% potentially. Other projections have it around 20%. Low, high. That stresses an infrastructure. We have to be thinking about, how does that affect schools? How does that affect roads, intersections? My God, even now, some of the intersections are hard to navigate. We have to be thinking about how those things work out, how energy is supplied. They're already looking at municipal energy systems for the town. We have to be thinking ahead, not just for the short term, but that long-term. More importantly, my background is partly in analytics. I love numbers and I love what numbers can tell you. And one of the biggest things about when you look at, whether it's city planning, whether it's any planning, is building a strategy around it. And strategy is all about measuring and adjusting, making sure that you set goals, you check them along the way, and then depending on how they're performing, you adjust if necessary. That all factors in to making sure you're successful 20 years down the road. You don't set something now and forget about it and realize, oh, it's, you know, something's off. That's one great thing about what 2030 has done, the Imagine Pittsburgh Project, is they've been adjusting that plan as they have developed it.
Thank you, Mr. Feenan. Mr. Ketterman.
Yes. Yeah, I agree with Michael. When we first got on the commission, there was no planning for anything. You just went through the budget for the next year and that was it. And since then, we've been able to come up with the five-year plans and for different things. But I'm not sure 10 years is really far enough to look out as to what's going to happen in Pittsburgh. I think you have to look farther than that. So I know there's a lot of talk about Pittsburgh growing to 30 or 30-plus thousand people. You know, you can't wait till 30,000 people are living here and try to do something about your sewer plant. You know, you've got to plan for that in the future to be able to have those things ready for when that does happen. You know, I don't know what else to say about that, but I think you have to have those comprehensive plans that go out farther than five or 10 years.
Thank you, Mr. Ketterman. And Mr. O'Brien.
I take offense to years in the past that the city of Pittsburgh does not, did not have a long-range plan. When I came on the commission, we had study sessions and we talked about what was going to happen five years down the road, 10 years down the road. And we put a plan together. And let's don't forget that a plan is just a plan. It's not a contract. It's something that we foresee happening. And those things change as we go along. We don't know what the federal government's going to do for us, what the state government's going to do to us. We've dealt with a lot of things that are different today than they were when we put some plans together. And we're working around those. We're working with them. And the city continues to work with long-range plans. We're starting to talk about a new sewer plant. That's a long way in the making. We talk about where the new roads are going to be. That's a long way in the making. We're not preparing. It's going on. It's going on as we sit here today.
Thank you all. Our third question from the audience will be answered first by Mr. Anselmi. And the question is this. What is something innovative you would like to see the city involved in? I don't know if our English teachers would like that because it ends in a preposition. But I'll read it again.
Can you use it in a sentence, please?
What is something innovative that you would like to see the city of Pittsburgh involved in?
And this goes to sustainability. Innovation could be anything with sustainability. But let's narrow it down. Something innovative that I would like to see the city involved in, let's go with wind power. How about that? Maybe innovation could be on top. We have roof buildings downtown, right, that have roofs on them, I would suspect, and they're all just leaking. But what if we turn that into a green space and it's an eco-friendly green space? Or what if something innovative downtown, like an urban farming center? And so now you're growing produce year-round downtown in an empty building that was just sitting there abandoned, vandalized, whatever the case may be. I know one specifically I'm thinking of. And instead of an abandoned building, now we're generating produce not only for Pittsburgh, but hey, maybe Joplin, maybe even Gerard, Frohnneck, those surrounding areas for restaurants, people to come. Oh, by the way, it could be a mental health program. You get that element tagged to it as well. I think that would be an additional revenue source down the road where we are a regional powerhouse in produce. And it sounds silly. It sounds crazy. It sounds innovative, maybe. But that's something that I have a little bit of passion behind. So if there's an innovative thing that we can be a part of, how about growing our own produce? I know the High Tunnel, you know, that is developed and underway. But I think an urban farming center downtown, that's pretty innovative.
Thank you, Mr. Anselmi. Ms. Chenoweth.
If I would have gotten that question first, I would have said exactly that same thing. So I have to think of something else. I would say that, for me, it would be really important for the city to get very innovative in tackling the question of poverty. And so poverty has gone down a few percentage points over the last few years, but I think that that's not enough. And I think that we need to work more on employing the working class or poor citizens in our community. I lived in Arizona for a few years and the city of Phoenix became the first city to implement an innovative citywide program that housed and employed all of its veterans. Because a large portion of the homeless and poor are US servicemen and women. And so I know there are over 1,000 veterans in Pittsburgh. I don't know the statistics on them being part of the population in poverty, but I know that many women, single mothers are in poverty, veterans, and surprisingly, a large number of older folks on disability find themselves in poverty. So if there is some kind of innovation that we could do to clean up our streets, to get people in housing tiny homes that meet codes, and find a way, whether it's through community-supported agriculture or something else, to employ the people in poverty in our city and give them a chance to have the same opportunities that all the rest of us have had.
Thank you, Ms. Chenoweth. Mr. Gray.
I would like to look at areas of technology. And I will have to say, I'm kind of deficient in terms of the technological aspect of everything because I never grew up doing a lot of that. But when I've spoken with Jay and others at the city about some of the opportunities that we have relative to fiber and internet and sharing of technology and things that drive businesses to locations, you know, when we get businesses, look at our city, you know, there's several questions that usually come back. And it's tied to either education, roads, infrastructure, technology. And those, the answers to our questions in those areas drive whether they're going to look at our community as a place to locate or not. And when I see some of the new entrepreneurial opportunities that are coming up with youth these days, I mean, you can't put aside technology. And so to the extent that we can become a leader in that area and make Pittsburgh an area where new businesses would want to locate, starting businesses would want to locate, and we can be a leader in terms of fiber, internet, sharing of technology, we're already doing some of that with respect to sharing information with other jurisdictions on the criminal side. You know, those necessarily maybe aren't innovative, you know, because other communities are already doing that. But certainly in our region, we can be a leader with respect to those ideas. And that's what we need to be as a leader in our region.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Feenan.
Data centers. You know, about three, four years ago, I think it was, Prior Oklahoma was in the running on a bid to get a Google data center, Prior Oklahoma. They didn't get it, unfortunately. But that means there's a gap in this area. Now, I know people are frustrated with Westar's electric prices, and they're right to be, but we also do have cheap energy for this, on the national average scale. I mentioned earlier, the cost of square footage for office space in this area. If we could bring in some kind of data center, even a small one into this area, that provides a huge opportunity, not just in terms of new technology. My partners and I, before Block 22 had come in, we were looking at the bank building about maybe doing a project like that, but unfortunately could not get the means together. But it was the perfect opportunity because of how cheap it would have been to run. The thing about that is, it's information tech jobs. Information and technology is one of the areas in town that has lost jobs over the last year and a half. They're also the best-paying jobs in the community. They average about $4,200 a month. Those are great ways to attract people. We had the question earlier of, how do you attract young people with jobs young people want and with prices that make them competitive compared to other places they might be looking? That's how we leverage that. And data centers aren't sexy. You know, they don't look cool. They're big boxes of racks. But it's a great avenue towards economic development. It's a great avenue towards technology development. And it's a great way to provide opportunity to young people in the community.
Thank you. Mr. Ketterman.
Hey, I think, you know, technology, like Michael was saying, with the fiber optics is a good choice for us to move forward with. We've got a lot of the groundwork done now, so there's a lot of possibilities with that. I think continuing to work to become a regional water supplier. We're fortunate, we're right on the sweet spot of the aquifer, so we really have pretty much an unlimited supply of water that we would be able to supply other communities with. But I think the, moving to a self-sufficient electrical system, becoming a municipal electrical company is something that I would really like to see us work on. And I know we are working on it. Westar gets brought up a lot. And I believe, if my memory serves me correct, they have like the fourth-highest utility rate of any electric company in the United States. So I would like to see us to continue to move to maybe someday becoming our own electrical supplier, either by wind, by solar, whatever it takes.
Thank you, Mr. Ketterman. Mr. O'Brien.
I think the city's job in innovation is to provide the foundation so that independent entrepreneurial people have the facilities that they need to start their own businesses. We need to have the fiber for them to use. We need to have the water for them to use. We need to have the manpower. We need to support education for trade schools, for people who can fill these jobs that aren't being filled at this point in time. We have gone to work on welding and some other crafts like that. We need to continue this and see that we have a population that can fulfill these innovative new companies that we don't even know what they are today because they haven't been created. But we need to have the resources here so that when they do get created, they will feel comfortable being in Pittsburgh, Kansas.
Thank you. And Ms. McNehey.
You're right. I think our opportunity is in workforce development. If you look at several of the organizations that are in place, the Business Education Alliance and the Career and Technical Center of Southeast Kansas, those were all partnerships that were created because there were gaps in the workforce. And in visiting with Blake and Darren, they do say that there are companies that want to come to our community, but the workforce isn't there. We have a lot of innovation in the schools. We have a lot of partnerships. But I think we need to be more innovative in terms of preparing our youth, identifying the jobs that need to be trained for. And to Sarah's point, reaching out and finding a way to engage those citizens that haven't had the opportunities my sons have. You know, what can we do for workforce development for individuals that didn't finish high school, et cetera? And there's lots of programs out there. It takes everyone working together. But I think in the past, maybe the city wasn't at the table. They are at the table now. And I think it's important to be innovative and develop that workforce and give individuals the chance to be successful.
Okay. Thank you all. Next question from the audience will be answered first by Ms. Chenoweth. And the question is this. What is your vision about all modes of transportation to include pedestrian transportation? What are your visions about all modes of transportation to include pedestrian transportation?
I love to walk and my husband loves to bike. So, you know, we always talk a lot about, or the commission meetings that I've been in, you know, people bring up things like sidewalks. And we do have a cool new program that allows matching funds if you want to get the sidewalk in front of your house fixed. My house doesn't even have a sidewalk in front of it, so that would be great to get sidewalks in everywhere. I think that the bike lane on Fourth Street is great. I see a lot of people misusing it. I think there needs to be lines up there designating the bike lane. More bike lanes. I really have thought ever since I moved here that there needs to be some more reliable form of bus transportation. Or I've heard my friend Becky Gray mention kind of like an electric transport. Or I've heard my friend Becky Gray mention kind of like an electric tram from one end of town to the other. So with the development downtown and with Block 22, housing students that are going to want to go to the university, that stretch between downtown and PSU is going to become really important. Not just to make transportation options available, but to make sure that they're safe. So any sidewalks or bike lanes, safe from the car traffic, any kind of bus or tram, or, you know, whatever kind of innovation that somebody would come up with would be a really great thing, especially around the downtown area, out to the hospital, to the community health center. And, you know, and not just improving the actual structures of the sidewalks in the streets, but making them look nice too. So aesthetic beautification of those.
Thank you, Ms. Chenoweth. Mr. Gray.
I certainly think that we need to have more walkability in our community. The city is focused on that over about the last three to five years, improving trail systems, adding the new program in the sales tax that Sarah was just referring to, where we can match funds for sidewalks. We have added bike lanes. We've improved the streets altogether, which of course improves other modes of transportation outside of walking. I think the thing we've tried to focus on as we've looked at those different areas is focusing on the basics that Patrick identified at the start of the evening. You know, where does the city fit into those items? How much money should the city spend on those modes of transportation? Where does that fit into the basic core of what cities should be doing? And what we've been able to do over the last three to five years is really do a lot of those things at private, privately funded dollars. For example, if you look at our trail systems, all those trails that have been placed were either grant-funded or privately funded, which has been a good thing for our community. So we have active participants, business owners and others in town, who have actively engaged to make our city more walkable and bikeable. And I think we should continue to focus on that going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Feenan.
So there's some, there are a few things to look at when you talk about things like alternative modes of transportation, pedestrian biking and others. There are several different municipal planning projects that you can look towards that help cities incorporate these models moving forward. I think that's important when we look like at one of the earlier questions about city planning. This is not a question for the short term. This is a question for the very long term. Any of the commissioners can correct me on this. I think we have somewhere in, what, the area of 100 miles of sidewalks in town is, I think, the number I've heard before. I'll take or leave that number, but that's what I'm pulling out of my head at the moment. Okay, thank you. That's a huge amount of distance to cover. And so when we look at this, it has to be from a, I think, a planning aspect, from a future-proofing aspect with new construction. The new Walmart that just went out, for instance, out at Ross and Centennial. If you'd noticed, they built in sidewalks all throughout there when they did that project. With the La Quinta on South Broadway, they have nice wide sidewalks being built in front of that area. Those are the things we need to encourage from a municipal development standpoint. And I also think we need to look at it from an accessibility standpoint. You know, good sidewalks and good means of transportation isn't just a pedestrian issue. It's an accessibility issue. If you're in a wheelchair, if you've got mobility issues, being able to get around town and having to cut out into, you know, pothole-filled curbs is a problem that we do need to look at.
Thank you, Mr. Feenan. And Mr. Ketterman.
Thank you. Yeah, I think as you see, or will see in the future, as we continue to build out, like everybody has said, we have the new program that is included in the sales tax that was just passed that will help pay for sidewalks. If anybody wants to put a sidewalk in, the city will pay part of it. I think as we continue to redo roads, you will see more and more bicycle lanes along the side of the road. And those are things that we just continue to work on, more trails. Do everything that we can to make it easier for people to get around and walk. And as you know, as we go along, any time that we go through an intersection or do a road where there is an intersection, we have to put in the handicap accessible ramps to get to the sidewalks. That's federal law now. So I think as we go, you'll just see more and more of it to come.
Thank you, Mr. Ketterman. Mr. O'Brien.
I think when you open this idea about public transportation, you get into a pretty deep well. It is usually not cost-effective. There's usually an issue with sustainability. If the city were to go into something like this, I would certainly hope that we would do it in conjunction with private investments so that it's something that doesn't weigh too heavily on the taxpayers. All these things are great ideas, but we have a tax base as it is, and we have to operate within that parameter. So that any time we go forward, we have to keep that in mind. We've, we're doing a good job on hiking, biking trails. We're doing a, trying, we're getting started with the sidewalk program. Those we can afford. And if we go beyond that, I think it's going to take a great deal of soul-searching for the community to make the decision that they want to spend their tax dollars that way.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Ms. McNehey.
Yes, if you look at the health of Crawford County, it's measured every year by the Robert Woods Johnson Foundation. We have improved. The citizens of our county have improved in health. And one of the factors they look at is what is the access, you know? Are there sidewalks? Are there biking trails, et cetera, biking paths? The city has been progressive, I think, in the last five to six years in partnering. And I think the city commission has a responsibility to support administration when they look to access grant funds, both public and private. One of the things we have to overcome, and we saw it on the south end of town, is the citizens and their "not in my backyard" kind of reaction sometimes. We weren't able to get a sidewalk to Meadowlark because of that. And hopefully, those attitudes will change over time when we see the impact on the health of our county. But as Patrick said, transportation does require resources. The city has tried on and off to partner with other organizations, and there isn't sustainability. So as we move forward, we are going to have to determine avenues that can be sustained financially. But they're all important to the health and wellness of our community.
And Mr. Inselmi.
Boy, look at that. I'm last. A lot of stuff has been said, but let me say this. Me and my wife are blessed to have a car. And if you don't have a vehicle, if you don't even have a bicycle, if you don't even have roller skates, to get to and from work is a challenge, okay? And so I have not lived that life. So I can't relate, but I can, as best I can, put myself in their situation. And so if you're trying to make ends meet and you want to go and have a job, I think obviously sidewalks are huge. Love that program. And when I heard about that program, literally yelled out loud. So I love that we're going to help with that down the road. Public transportation, it's, nothing is going to be cheap. Nothing's going to be probably sustainable. But what are those innovative ways that we can partner with people and have something that's supplied? I think it's an issue that obviously the current commission has dealt with very well. And I think they're on a very good path forward with biking trails. I love that they're all getting connected, and there's a sense of unity throughout all of them. But it's something, I think, if you're in that situation, you're literally just trying to go to work so you can make ends meet. This is where my compassionate side comes out. I think we have to try and do something to help those folks. And I know, even if they're not the majority, I think, is that the image we want to leave, you know, behind? Is that we're not going to help them? I think the slogan "Forward Together," that doesn't just mean forward together for 40 or 50 others that aren't in that path. So I think it's forward together as a unit. But again, it's going to be complicated to get anywhere near a consensus on that, I think.
Thank you all. As we get closer to the end of tonight's event, we have time for one, maybe two more questions submitted from the audience. I will remind everybody that if you submit a question, it has to be applicable to all seven candidates. If it's not, then it will not be passed on to the moderator. So our next question will be answered first by Mr. Gray. And the question is this. How can a city encourage high-paying jobs? How can a city encourage the development of high-paying jobs?
Man. Well, one, we can't tell businesses what they pay and what they can't pay. So it's a very difficult scenario to be in because, of course, we want high-paying jobs. We have to have a workforce that can work high-paying jobs. A lot of times, high-paying jobs come with specific skill requirements that, especially in like the tech area, I'm sorry. Was that me or was that you? Okay. Especially in the tech area, sometimes specific skills are required to be able to get those high-paying jobs. To the extent that those things are required, we either need to focus on workforce development so that we can have a workforce to get those jobs. I think primarily, the way that we can do it is indirectly, and that's through competition. And I am a capitalist in nature. I believe that a lot of times the economic growth that you see in our community is because we've incentivized competition and growth. And if you have two people who do the same thing, one is going to encourage the other to get better. And over time, prices are going to vary, wages are going to vary, depending on what those two people do as they compete for the market. And I think we've seen that. I think we've seen that in terms of specific businesses within our community. And I've seen, I think we've seen that just by seeing businesses locate people here in Pittsburgh. There's a number of businesses that have moved people to Pittsburgh with high-paying jobs because of the workforce and the competition that we have in our community. I think that's how we do it indirectly.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Feenan.
I disagree. I think the city does it directly. And I think they just did it directly in an extremely effective way when they sold land to Apex Stages. I don't know how many folks know what aluminum welders make, but it's a lot. And we just enabled Apex Stages to add several jobs out at their facility. That is how a city helps foster good-paying jobs by, we use this word partnership a lot, right? By partnering with the community, by partnering with the job creators. The city, I think, is very forward-thinking in that way and being very open when, you know, business owners come in and say, hey, I've got an idea. And they bend over backwards to help that business owner see to fruition, you know, what they want to do. We've got a ton of people in this town that are focused on doing just that. The other, just throwaway kind of answer, I'll tack on to that, is, you know, through marketing. If you've seen some of the marketing effort that the city has done in the past year, largely in partnership with Limelight and bringing in, you know, the Public Information Officer and whatnot, a lot comes down to vision as well. And making sure that the businesses that want to pay a lot see this as a place that's worth putting money into and putting money into the people. And Pittsburgh's effort in that area isn't just good, it shows in the results. We just had the economic report come out. I've quoted a lot of numbers tonight because I enjoyed reading it. And it shows that we have done really well in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Feenan. Mr. Ketterman.
Thank you. You know, I agree with Michael. It's kind of hard for the municipality or the government, or the ruling government, to say, well, you have to pay more to your employees. I think it's just something that, like Michael said, you do through competition. About, I think about the only way directly that we can have an impact on that is through the economic development funds. That, you know, any business that wants to get money out of that, we can put some kind of a clause in there that you have to pay above a certain wage in order to get that money. I think that's the only way that we can effectively encourage them directly into paying higher wages. The rest of it's going to have to be done by competition through other businesses or bringing in other businesses that pay higher wages than what is paid locally.
Okay, thank you. Mr. O'Brien.
I think the first thing you need to do is to know what jobs pay the best. What jobs pay the most. Once you'd make that determination, then you have to know what does this company need to have in Pittsburgh, Kansas to locate here? We have to know that we have the infrastructure, whether it's water, whether it's the net, whatever it is, we need to know, we need to have that here for them to use. Then we need to educate our workforce to be able to fill these jobs. If we have the infrastructure for them and no employees who are hirable, it goes for nothing. So we have to have that. Then we have to go out and expose ourselves. Expose to these companies what the city of Pittsburgh has to offer them by going to different trade shows, to work through our successful people here in Pittsburgh, Kansas, to have them put our name out in front of other companies that they are working with already. And I think that's how we can do this job.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Ms. McNehey.
This goes back to the comprehensive plan that we were talking about. If you have a comprehensive plan and you know what the capacity is in your infrastructure that the city is responsible for, then you can determine what companies you can court, what companies, when they come knocking, that you can engage with. The other piece is to look at our businesses that pay a good living wage and how are we supporting them? We can't sacrifice one for the other. I do believe it's a balancing act when the city offers tax abatements because that does affect other taxing entities. So when we're recruiting new businesses and we are looking at tax abatements or infrastructure costs, we do need other government agencies at the table. The recruiting needs to be not only by the city, but by education and other businesses. But I think that planning piece is important, as several have said, to determine what businesses can we attract with the current infrastructure that we have.
Mr. Inselmi.
Yeah, I think attracting, and I kind of struggle with this question a little bit because what is a high-paying job? I mean, depending on your situation, a $15 an hour is a high-paying job, or an $8 an hour is a high-paying job. So I think specifically, it'd been cool to see what level they're thinking. But all of the above, competition is great, as long as you don't damage anybody that's already here and established and already have those jobs. But one thing I think we also need to throw into the mix is just education. I mean, a higher education, having that workforce here. Therefore, the company, if they need a specific aluminum welder, whoever that is, they know those people exist, and they know when they move here that they're already going to have a workforce ready to deliver on their product for whoever their customer is. So that's all great. Infrastructure's huge. Got to make sure you have water for them. They can turn their lights on when they need it. And if they have five lights, all of them are going to work at the same time. But I think also a big thing is knowing that we want higher-paying jobs here, but we also want to make sure that those higher-paying jobs aren't sacrificing something on the other end of the spectrum, right? So yeah, you're going to make more money here, but maybe you don't get it as much in terms of benefits or you don't get as much in terms of leave if you have a child or something like that. So I think higher-paying jobs is great. Again, I would have loved to have had that defined. But I think it's going to be a balancing act to determine what is going to actually make them invest here in Pittsburgh long-term and stay here long-term. So it'll be specific. We'll have to get in the weeds on that, I think.
And Ms. Chenoweth.
So, you know, I think just sometimes, almost just as important as having a job that pays really well is having a job that you feel good about. I feel very fortunate that I have a job that I can feel really good about getting to help people. So it is a lot about the kind of businesses you want to attract with the ways that, you know, everyone up here was saying to attract business, marketing, infrastructure, and all of that. I think attracting quality businesses that are very forward-thinking, businesses, you know, green technology, different technologies that we've talked about, as well as industry and manufacturing and using our natural resources. And I think that any kind of higher-paying jobs that we get, and of course, we want to keep our PSU graduates here in our own workforce to create that community that they've spent so much time at the university building. But I think it's important that as we talk about getting higher-paying jobs, that we don't lose the idea of the middle class. That we don't have a lot of people starting to make a lot more money and these other jobs, fast food and more minimum wage jobs, you have those people staying the same. And we don't want to lose the people in the middle, right? middle, right? So as well as offering higher-paying jobs, we want to be able to bring that bottom up along with it so that everybody in the community benefits from, from industry and, and the kind of businesses.
Okay. Thank you. And again, thank you to all the, uh, the audience members that submitted questions tonight. We do have time for one more, uh, but again, appreciate all the, the questions that have been submitted. And our final audience question will be answered first this evening by Mr. Feenan. And the question is this. What would be your talking points to convince people to live inside the city limits as opposed to outside the city limits? What would be your talking points to convince people to live inside the, pardon me, inside the Pittsburgh city limits instead of outside?
I mean, besides the fact that I'm here? I mean, that's, that's one starting place. No. Um, you know, one of the great things about being, and actually, I'll, I'll back up a hair. I owned a house over on South Eighth Street for a while. Um, when, uh, I switched jobs, I was looking for a, a larger house to have an office in. Um, and I was looking outside the city limits at the time. Um, and one of the things that quickly became apparent was I could not get the services that I needed and wanted outside the city limits, even within, you know, half a mile of the city limits. Um, you know, things like, you, the city, for instance, is going through great lengths right now to, uh, work with folks like Crokan to get fiber, um, spread through town. And it's available outside the city limits, but not very far and not very well. Um, it's available in very limited areas. Um, you know, things like that are really easy to not think about until you realize how much you rely and depend on them. Um, even, you know, other things like cellular service and, and services like that. Pittsburgh now benefits from Uber. Um, I don't know how many folks here have used it. I've used it several times, uh, when you have to take a vehicle to the mechanic, sure a lot easier than trying to coordinate with my wife to come pick me up while she's working. Um, those services only extend so far from the city. Um, we've got it right here and it's available on demand. You know, these new things that we're coming up with and, and the new ways we're approaching these problems, um, are fantastic, but they're only available if you're here. Um, and that, I think, is something to consider very heavily when you're looking at what makes a place worth living in.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Feenan. Mr. Ketterman.
Thank you. I think probably I would start with the city services, uh, with your city water. You, we have an excellent fire department, we have an excellent police department. Uh, you're not going to get that outside the city. You're not going to have the, the ability to do that. I think, uh, again, with the cables, uh, systems, the fiber optic systems that are coming in, uh, they're all things that you can get inside the city here that you won't be able to get so far outside of the city. Uh, we have great employees here, we have great city services, uh, you know, everything you want and need, besides which, uh, being in the city limits with the fire department will lower your insurance rates.
Thank you, Mr. Ketterman. Mr. O'Brien.
I know we have a lot of, uh, people who are employed in, in the city of Pittsburgh, uh, who live, uh, in Missouri and in the neighboring communities. And if I was talking to them, trying to encourage them to move to the city of Pittsburgh, I would say one thing, quality of life. If they would stop and think about the windshield time that they use commuting, the cost of that, uh, and the time away from their family, uh, it winds up to be a considerable, uh, item to think about. Uh, I know housing in Pittsburgh is, uh, not as cheap as in Missouri, and there's a reason. In Missouri, you don't have to build with a licensed plumber or a licensed electrician or a licensed this or a licensed that. So the houses that you get built in Pittsburgh, Kansas are done by these people, and so you have a better unit when you get through paying your dollars. Uh, I think that, uh, we have all of these services that we provide that are not available at the same rate as living outside of Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Ms. McNamee.
Um, you know, our community swells to over forty thousand during the day. Um, that's a significant number coming into our community and not living here. Um, and, you know, what I've heard over the years is that really, a part of it is housing. Uh, and I think the city is working very hard to provide more robust housing stock so that people feel that they can find the house for them. Um, and what I would say to someone that lives outside of the city, you know, this is an engaging community. You can be a part of city government. There are eleven different boards and commissions you can be a part of. You can have a voice, you can make a difference. Um, and all of the things that we've been talking about, the positive city services, the, the choices in schools, higher ed, um, but it seems like when we look at the data that primarily it has to do, uh, with housing. And so, uh, before we can engage a lot of those people, we really do need to be aggressive on, um, in, in finding different avenues to improve, uh, variety of housing in our community.
Thank you, Ms. McNamee. Mr. Anselmi.
Yeah, it's a simple answer. Bamboo only delivers so far. Okay? And, uh, on a serious note, me and my wife actually did live outside the city limits, and we bought a house inside the city limits. Let me tell you, we were paying twelve dollars for water, we're paying forty now, and there is a difference. The quality is amazing. You're laughing, but it's true, Sydney. Uh, so the services, I reiterate again, John, that's point, 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 point. Um, the services you get in town, the law enforcement, the fire department, amazing, outstanding, that's just two aspects of the whole deal. Uh, the bike trails in town, you're already connected, it's literally a hop and a skip to get on one, you're connected to a whole slew of them. Um, but I think more importantly, and I, I go back to some of my original thoughts, and it's very simple, if you like to live out in the country, that's your game, that's great, you know, it's peace of mind, it's, it's, it's easy living in some circumstances, but the people in town are really what make it what it is. And so if you're willing to connect and get involved and be a part of stuff, the people you're going to meet are going to increase your quality of life exponentially. So I would say, yes, water's great, bamboo only goes so far, the fiber's amazing, I'm waiting to get that on Pine Street, if we can hurry that up, that'd be great. Um, but really, it's the people you're going to meet and all of the services that are provided that, it's, it's, it's a no-brainer in our case. It was pretty easy, I think, for us to decide that, and we love living in the city. I'm not just saying that because I'm on TV and camera, um, but it's an amazing, amazing place to live, amazing place to stay, so.
Ms. Chennawith.
Um, yes, absolutely what everyone said, the people here are amazing, and, you know, I think because our city is, is moving forward in a very progressive direction, it's nice to just have that sense of community. Um, when my husband and I moved here, we considered moving outside of town just because we wanted space. We like land and, you know, we wanted to have a, a big garden and maybe some chickens or something, but you can have chickens, um, in the city, just no roosters to make all the... Uh, we were fortunate enough to find a, a place with, with a good deal of land that we can have that garden, but I can also walk to Lincoln Park and to the YMCA. I can walk downtown, I can actually work or walk to a few of the places that I work. Um, and so that connectivity, that sense of community of being just a few blocks away from your best friends and the people that you work with and the people that are really important to you. If I had a child, I could walk to the center, you know, to, to take my child there, and you can't do that if you live out in the country. And so I think that it's important that everyone who spends time in the city, who works here, has a bit of that sense of community. I think that people will be better at their jobs, um, if they are more involved in, in the people that they're around and, and the work they're doing and just feel like it's a cohesive unit of a, a really fun place to be with really great people.
Thank you. Mr. Gray.
Well, I, I would echo that there's going to be a lot of people that just don't want to live in the city and, or even in a small, smaller city like, like Pittsburgh is when you compare it to Kansas City or some other place. And for those people, there's never going to be any convincing, you're never going to persuade them, they, they want to live in the country, they want that, and that's fine. I mean, everybody is, is entitled to what they want to be able to do there. For me, it's, it's a sense of community. Uh, i- it's a sense of being not a visitor, I'm a part of something. And if I wanted to be a visitor in Pittsburgh every day and just show up to work and then leave, uh, then if that's what I want, then that's, I mean, that's fine. Uh, everybody has their own choice, I don't want that. Uh, I want to be a part of something, that's why I got in, engaged in the city commission, because I want to be in, I want to be a part of the community where I work and live. And for me, living outside the city limits and commuting someplace sometimes is necessary, some people have to do that because of circumstances, but if it's only because of choice, I would choose to be a part of the community and be engaged in the community rather than just be a visitor on a daily basis.
Very good. So thank you again to all of our audience members that submitted questions. Unfortunately, we ran out of time and didn't, weren't able to ask all of them, but thank you again for submitting those. Thank you to Patrick for screening all of those for us here tonight. Each of our candidates will now have two minutes for a closing statement. Mr. Ketterman, we will begin with you.
Good. Again, I would like to thank all of you that showed up this evening and all of you at home listening. I, I hope you got your questions answered and, and have some idea of what you'd like to do. I'd just like to say it's been an honor to serve this community for the last seven years. Uh, hopefully I'll get to serve it for a little while longer, so, uh, appreciate it again. Everybody be sure to get out and vote on the seventh.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien.
I'll echo John, uh, in thanking everyone for showing up full house tonight inside, and we hope we have a full house, uh, on the TVs. Uh, it's been an eye-opening experience to serve on the city commission, and I mean that in a positive way. Uh, even though I've, I've, uh, worked in a lot of organizations, uh, had a retail store for almost fifty years, uh, this gives you a whole different perspective of what's going on here in the city. It lets you know how much work our employees are doing for us, where our tax dollars are going. It also gives you the opportunity to help guide where the city's going, uh, what we will be doing, and I hope that, uh, in the years that I've served, uh, it's shown that I come to the table for the betterment of Pittsburgh. I don't have an axe to grind, I'm not out to get something or, or be devious about, uh, my agenda. My agenda is straight out, I love Pittsburgh, I've been pleased to live here for almost fifty years, and I want to see that it continues to be a great city for, I shouldn't have used the word great, sounds like somebody else. Oh, God. But anyway, I, I hope, I hope that the city of Pittsburgh can maintain being a wonderful place to raise a family, and I'm going to do my job to see that that happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Ms. McNamee.
That was great. Thank you. Um, as a voter, because I get three votes also, I was interested in hearing from everyone tonight, and I think, um, voters out there have a great slate of candidates.
What do you mean you get three votes?
Oh, don't I? Um, so the decision you have as a voter is what are the skills and experiences we each bring, um, to create a commission that is representative of our community. Um, I guess I would offer, what I bring is experience, uh, in the healthcare sector, um, and education, and both of those have given me a kind of a comprehensive understanding of the demographics of our community. We talk a lot about economic development, and that's great because it provides jobs, but it also provides an increase in our tax base so that we can start to, um, help those that haven't had, um, the resources that the rest of us had. We can have programs like the one that's with the city and the Family Resource Center where, um, advocates go in after, in a domestic situation and, and help those families. Um, the, the city, I really feel, and I think we all feel that, the city is really poised, um, for greatness, and, uh, it will raise the boat for everyone. And, um, as cer- when I served on the Board of Education, I, I think I bring that I understand that the decisions the commission makes affects all citizens, and when you're talking about, um, taxing as a resource, that affects all citizens. I would take that very seriously, um, and I would just like the opportunity to be a part of the commission and, um, and move forward, move the city forward.
Thank you. Mr. Anselmi.
Well, for everybody here, thank you. I'll echo, 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 uh, what has already been said, but thank you for showing up, everybody online, thank you for watching, if you're on TV, wherever you're watching from. Um, again, I think it all comes down to relationships, and so I'm excited and humbled if, if elected, if I'm chosen to be in one of the three openings. Um, I'm just excited to get that opportunity and to serve all of you. Um, and so I think moving forward, it's going to be very important for all of you to, to speak up and say something, and so it's only five people, and you elect them, yes, but really ultimately, this is your city, right? So if there's something, an idea you have, I would hope you would reach out to any of us and let us know, and I, and I would also echo, I think all of these are great candidates. I probably shouldn't say that, right? This is where I need to like start saying like me, 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 but anybody that's elected here, I think, is going to serve you in the best way possible, and they're going to have all of your intentions and best intentions, uh, moving forward at their mind. And so I think it's a, it's a, it's a great opportunity, uh, if, given that, that, that if I am selected, it'll be a great opportunity. I'm very humbled to serve if, if that's what is the case. I would say this as a parting thought, um, I think the world of Pittsburgh, Kansas, and it's only because of you that Pittsburgh, Kansas is what it is. Um, like I said, we had an opportunity to move away and we didn't because we want to invest in this community, right? So, uh, I don't know many of you, right, but I consider us a family, and so if a family, if there's one member that's not doing so well, it affects the entire family. So I think the way we get there together is forward together. I just keep using that slogan because it's awesome, right? So again, November seventh, get out and vote, do not care who you vote for, but get out and vote. You get three votes, I think, right? Okay, yeah, three. So just get out and vote, please vote. It's important to be engaged and involved, and this is the best way to do it. November seventh.
Thank you, Mr. Anselmi. Ms. Chennawith.
Yeah, thanks for everybody for being here and, um, listening to all of our ideas about the future of Pittsburgh. I agree that I think that everybody up here has, uh, what she or he believes to be the best interest of Pittsburgh at heart. Um, and, you know, I also think that representation is really important, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to point out that currently there are no women on the city commission, even though, uh, fifty percent of the population of Pittsburgh is female. And, and I also think that it's great that, you know, there are young people in the audience and, and some of us young people up here who are really interested in, in getting involved, um, you know, at a, at a young age with our sort of futures ahead of us, our futures that I think that we want to spend here in Pittsburgh. Um, so as I said earlier, you know, I, I haven't always known that I would want to run for local office, but I have always known that the only thing that would ever make me happy would be to be doing some work that helped people live the best lives that they can live. And, and I get to do that, working, um, at Safe House and being on the Board of Women Helping Women and just teaching yoga around town, gets to interact with so many people in so many different, uh, situations and at so many different points in, in their own lives. Um, and so I would say that my mission is one of service, and I would also be very humbled to be able to, uh, be one of your city commissioners. So I would appreciate your vote, uh, being one of your three votes on November seventh. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chennawith. Mr. Gray.
I'd like to also just thank everyone, and, uh, I would also echo what John and, and Patrick have said in terms of just being honored to have served as a city commissioner. I'll be honest in that, uh, you guys, I probably shouldn't share this story, but when I first ran in two thousand and eleven, I kind of just threw my name in the hat. It was really low expectations in terms of whether I'd be successful or not, and I wanted to do it, and I put my name out there, and people trusted me, and it was by a very slim margin, but people trusted me. And I've been honored to have done this now for a second term, and I'm seeking a third, and the idea that you have individuals in town, all these candidates, who are willing to put their name out there to represent their fellow citizens on a volunteer basis for the people that are here in this community. I'm honored to be sitting with every one of these individuals, and I'm honored to serve with Jeremy and Chuck currently, who are also current commissioners who aren't up for reelection, because I think that kind of engagement is important in our community, whether it's city commission, whether it's on a board, whether it's volunteering somehow with a charity. We have to be engaged, and I think that's important. Uh, I would ask for your vote on November seventh, and as far as I'm concerned, you can only just, you can vote just once for me if you, if you're okay with that. But you do have three votes, so I'll let you decide if you want to use all three of them. But I, I am... But I am, I can't say enough about the candidates and the kind of people that are up here. Those of you who might not know me and might know other individuals that are sitting up here, I think you know what I'm talking about. I would be honored to serve with any of these individuals, and I think you should be proud of the group of candidates that have come out for this year for the city commission. And with that, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. And Mr. Fienen?
I am not a perfect man. I know many of you who are here tonight, I can't promise you a lot of things. I can't promise you that you will agree with me on everything. I can't promise that I will make decisions that make you happy all the time. I can promise one thing for sure, though, and that's that I have one mode, and it's open. I brought cards with me tonight, please come up, grab one, I've got my Facebook page on it, I've got an email address on it. If you have a question, a comment, if you want to pick my brain, send me a message, I promise I'll answer you. If you catch me outside sometime, please ask. If you elect me and you disagree with something I did, come ask me why I did what I did. I will always answer a question about why I think the way that I think. And more importantly, an open-door policy is the only thing that makes sense to me as somebody working in a small community. You have to know that if you have an idea or a trouble or a problem, that there's somebody you can approach with those thoughts. And I absolutely promise that that's something that I practice in my life, I'm practicing today, and I would practice for you as a commissioner. I hope I've maybe won somebody over. If I did, I do have about five or six more signs in my truck, I think, so feel free to ask. I'll be more than happy to give you one before we take off from here, so. But do come grab a card. If nothing else, it has the election date and everything on it, so you'll keep that on your calendar. And I'm going to put the floor back to Mr. Benson and take us home.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fienen. I hope our audience members will give our candidates a round of applause this evening. Thank you for being willing to serve the citizens of Pittsburgh. Thank you for your time here this evening. Again, thank you to Patrick Richardson for serving as our proctor and to the city of Pittsburgh for hosting us tonight. And with that, we are adjourned. Have a great evening.